We are ready to begin. I thank the council for the, I'm sorry, the forum for the Barrington Town Council candidates. I'll just explain a little bit. The format, I drew a little curve ball of them two minutes ago, just slight change or a format, but not a big deal. They're all going to have one-minute opening statements, they're all going to have one-minute closing statements. They're all going to be asked six questions throughout the evening directly with one-minute answers. Instead of asking the question and going all the way down the row of six people to answer the same question, we're going to do it in groups of three. So three candidates will answer the same question, and then everyone else will have a chance to jump in on that topic if they choose to. If not, we're going to ask a new question to the next group of three, and we're going to keep moving. As I said before, I'm the tour guide. I'll let you know when it's your turn, I'll direct you through the program. At the end of it, everyone will have equal amount of time to speak, everyone will be asked six questions, everyone has eight wild cards to use throughout the program, and everyone will be given the equal opportunity to speak throughout. We predetermined the orders. This is, we're starting over here with number one, going down to number six, and we're ready to begin. Mr. Hughes, you can take us away to the opening statement.
Okay. We on? We live? Yep. Having spent my entire life as a Barrington resident, many of you may know, many of you know me. For those who may not, my name is Brian Hughes. I grew up in Barrington and am a proud fourth-generation resident. I received an education from Barrington Public Schools before attending your eye, where I studied mechanical engineering. Up until that point, living here was my parents' choice, but once I had the option, I chose to stay. I've also had the privilege of running my own business, being news builders here in town for the last seventeen years. My wife Emily and I share a happy and fulfilling marriage. We're constantly in awe of our two wonderful children, Maddie, who is nine and attends Hampton Meadows, and Taylor, who is six and first grade at N A. While Barrington offers many benefits, I've noticed the decline in the values that once defined our community. Fiscal responsibility, preserving space for longtime residents, and showing gratitude to our veterans who sacrificed made our way of life possible. These basic values have seemed to have slipped and frankly, unfettered. Taxes have risen, and we're seeing fewer and fewer benefits. Our fields and town centers have deteriorated, and my goal is to breathe new life into Barrington, bring back focus on these core values. I'm committed to support local businesses, honoring our veterans, honoring our veterans and elderly, and bringing back, showing respect to municipal workers, including fire and police departments. It's time for positive change.
Thank you. Kerry O'Neill.
Hello. Thank you for coming, and thank you to the League Women Voters, East Bay Media, and the Barrington Public Library for listening to this forum. My name is Kerry O'Neill, and I am seeking my first term on the Barrington Town Council. I live in Barrington with my wife and our twelve-year-old son, who attends the Barrington Middle School, and our dog Rocket. I was a parent volunteer with the Hampton Meadows School Compass Program and its tough type of fundraiser. I was a volunteer for the Y S A, team manager, and house league soccer coach, and I am a supporting member of the Barrington Land Conservation Trust. Professionally, I'm a graphic designer who specializes in helping motivate advertising, and I work from home. I'm an added runner, a novice gardener, and a reluctant handiworker. I was encouraged to run for town council by friends and neighbors such as yourselves. My family is thrilled to call Barrington home. I welcome the opportunity to serve and advocate for you and all of our neighbors. I will push for climate resilience, equity and sustainability, biodiversity, safe streets, and most of all, collaborative governance. Thank you.
Thank you. Derek Daly.
Good evening. I'm Derek Daly. My wife and I and our five children moved here in August of 2021 after a decade living in Oak Hill, Pawtucket. We searched across Rhode Island looking for a place to find our forever home and settled on Barrington because of the great schools, the small town charm, and strong sense of community. Despite enduring a four-month renovation of our house, it took a year and is still not quite done, we're thrilled to be a part of this incredible town. I work in medical technology development primarily from home with occasional business travel. I was raised in rural New Hampshire, lived all across the country during my fourteen years in the Marine Corps, and I've experienced many places, but none quite like Barrington. I've gotten to know the parents of the basketball team, the kids on the basketball teams that I coach. Side note, we won the rec league championship this year, so if you saw that in the paper, great. If you didn't, I have articles in my car. I know the principals at my kid's school, I know local business owners, doctors, landscapers, and city workers, and have met many, many great people here. And when I'm away on business, I'm not concerned about what's going on at my house. I think that if something were to happen, there's a network of great people that would be willing to lend a hand. There's very few things here that need fixing, and the things that do need fixing are probably because we tried to fix something that wasn't broken and a little bit too much fixing led us to where we are now. So my role here is to, I'm running over time, this is longer than I intended, ensure the government's singular focus is on the citizens and taxpayers, practice fiscal responsibility, support those who built this community, veterans and senior citizens, and preserve our small-town ethos and emergency preparedness.
Thank you. Jordan Jankosik.
Hello. My name is Jordan Jankosik, and I'm really excited to be running for Barrington Town Council. I moved to Barrington in May 2020 with my husband and dog to be closer to my dog in Providence. We welcomed their daughter in 2021 and have since really experienced everything this community has to offer. My daughter is a regular at the library and a fixture at the town beach, no matter the weather. We have a family membership at the Y M C A, which we enjoy open swim and youth basketball. We've also recently started mini-kickers, which is an adventure, as I'm sure many of you know, and has been a great way to meet more of my neighbors. Being active in this community and seeing how engaged it is firsthand is what prompted me to run the town council. I want to be part of the solutions that propel Barrington forward. In my day job, I am an archivist, which means I work to make our past available for our future. I want to do the same for Barrington by focusing on climate resiliency, safer roads and streets, and the strengthening of our community with a focus on intergenerational living. By broader terms, I am an outsider, but I am an outsider with a fresh perspective who is committed to sowing deep roots here by focusing on real issues so that our residents and future generations can see real results.
Thank you. Brian Hoffman.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having us up here. My name is Brian Hoffman. I am the chair of the Barrington Business and Community Association. I sit on the Economic Development Commission, and I'm a board member of TAP, and I moved with my family just under six years ago. I was a first-time homebuyer at the time, and I immediately sought to get involved in the community. So I joined the Barrington Business Association, which I now run under a different name, and joined the East Bay Chamber of Commerce Board, and have done quite a bit in the community, including the first film festival the town ever had, its first street fairs. I've organized a couple of holder plunges for charities, farmers markets, there's been a bunch, and I've enjoyed every minute of it. I think that I am a community builder, and I think that with a larger platform, I can do even more for this community. So that's really the reason that I'm doing this. It's been a wonderful place for me to live and for my family to live. Kids both go to Permrose Hill, and I'm looking forward to telling you more of the force of the elements.
Thank you. And Liana Casar.
Thanks so much. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. I'm really glad to have another chance to talk about the issues that are facing Barrington residents. You know, I believe that the role of local government is to work for the collective good and to assure that we have systems and infrastructure in place so that residents really have access to the resources and services that they need, regardless of age, regardless of income, regardless of background, regardless of ability, so that they can thrive. You know, my priority for the town is that we all do what we can with the resources that we have to keep our community healthy, and that our municipality be as environmentally and economically resilient as possible to face what's to come. I've worked as a public health professional in Rhode Island and Massachusetts for two decades, and then I served two terms in the Rhode Island House of Representatives, representing Barrington and Riverside, and I currently run a leadership development program for women state legislators around the country. Each chapter of my life has been fueled by my commitment to work with people to make systems work better for all, for the well-being of all. My husband Larson and I raised our two kids here in Barrington, and I look forward to another chance to serve our town. I ask for your support in this election, so I have the chance to put my expertise and experience to work as a member of the town council. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to questions. We're going to come back down here. Mr. Hughes, I'm going to start with you. This question is going to go to Mr. Hughes, Mr. O'Neill, Mr. Daly, and then when they're done, like I said, if anyone else wants to jump in, you have the opportunity to. A couple of these questions I wrote myself, most of them were submitted by the, the vast majority were submitted by folks ahead of time or tonight, so just so you know. Some of the language is not mine. Some of it is. There are, there are many issues for our small town to address in the coming years, from lack of an economic development plan, increasing, increasing personal property taxes impacting many of our seniors, and rising seawater levels, to name a few. If elected, what would be your number-one priority to address in your capacity as a town councillor?
There's, so there's a lot to tackle here. I think my number-one thing is first, so I come from a small business, right? And, you know, in a small business, you have to watch every dollar. And I think the issue with the town right now is we're overspending. You know, from the consultant fees to, you know, to the signs that we put up, it's just overspending everywhere we look. I just feel like the dollars aren't going in the right place. You know, and from somebody from small business, I'm looking at this, and I see, you know, I just want to kind of nurture the town that I grew up in, and it's just not, it's not kind of moving in the direction that I thought. So I'm here, and that's the best I can do.
Mr. O'Neill, same question. Top priority.
My top priority immediately would be increasing climate resilience. Our town is already moving forward with the Build, Build a Resilient Barrington Plan, and the Town Council meeting passing that this fall, but I feel that we should be pushing even more. And so anything I can do on the town council to increase our efforts regarding sea level rise and the climate change, I'd be pushing for. I'd be pushing for more solar in town, I'd be looking for better storm water management from flooding. That would definitely be my top priority. One of the things I'd like to implement would be a resiliency report where every month, one of us from the town council would come to, to the town council meeting and share what we've done, what we're doing, and what needs to be done in the next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Daly, same question.
Yes, so I think the, the top priority and the first priority is emergency preparedness. I think that there's storms that are affecting all of us. If we just look at the news today, we see that. So it's essentially, maybe coming at it from a different angle of some of my friends here, I would say that evaluate, update, and promulgate the emergency preparedness plan. Look at what's there, evaluate, actually test it. When was the last time that we saw a bunch of firefighters and police and people with sandbags out testing this plan? I haven't seen it since I've been here, maybe I missed it, but evaluate the plan, run through it, and see what it's like under real stress and chaos, and update the plan from there. And then promulgate the plan to our, to our, to our residents, and have them know where to go, what to do, and, you know, if your next-door neighbor is, is someone who might need help, know that your job might be to go check on them and sort of let the community know what, what they should be doing to help one another.
Yes, Ms. Jan, Jankosik, please. Yes, this is a, this is a wild card.
So I just want to echo everything that Ms. O'Neill said about climate resiliency. I think it's one of the biggest issues facing Barrington, and it would be one of my top priorities. The other is safer streets. I agree, I think we spend too much money. Sidewalks are expensive, so how do you fund them? You advocate up and down the state with your state and federal elected officials, and that is how you get those big ticket items here in Barrington. I was canvassing over in the Massasoia area the other day, and everyone I talked to needed sidewalks. I think it is a vital part of our community, and we need to do better there.
Thank you. That was a very efficient, very second answer. So yeah, keep in mind, these are thirty-second blocks, so you're going to go further. Ms. Hoffman.
Probably won't come as a shock, since I run the business association, but I want to see the businesses grow and thrive here. I think we need to become more business-friendly in the town, it will help increase our tax revenues, and I would love to see, what I have loved to see is the restaurants have been growing organically. We've really seen some beautiful places come in recently. I want to add an arts community. We don't have any art galleries, we don't have a performing arts center in the East Bay. These are all things that bring people to our town, and the events that I've done in the town have tried to, I've tried to do that. So the more people we can bring in to see this beautiful town, the better.
Thank you. You don't, you choose, yeah, so you don't have to, but you know, you'd be the only one who did it. So come right ahead, Ms. Casar.
All right, but I'm going to do it a little bit differently, because narrowing down to one priority is, is a little bit ridiculous, there are so many important issues. So I think of them as short-term, mid-range, and long-term. And in the short term, we need to engage more people and town government. We are constantly asking for people to serve on boards and commissions, and we need to make it good, easy, fun. The second is midterm emergency preparedness. Absolutely agree. We're looking at storms around the country. It's only a matter of time till it's our turn, and we need to be prepared. We can see what needs to be done, we need to do it. It goes hand in hand with our climate resilience. And the long term is about affordability. The people in our town, we lose people when they leave high school because they can't afford to stay in town unless they're living with their parents, and then we lose people as they age. When you are a resident of Barrington, when you get older, sixty-five, seventy-five and older, your likelihood of living in Barrington in poverty raises almost threefold, and that is astonishing. We need to work on that, make our town more affordable. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move to a new question. Ms. Jankosik, we're starting with you, and we're going to, like down the road, the three of you, Mr. Hoffman and Ms. Casar. All right. The school district's current plan is to make improvements at three elementary schools and move students out of the Hampton Meadows School. Assuming this moves forward as planned, what are your thoughts about future uses of that building and property?
So the world's our oyster here, right? We can use that space for anything. I want to be clear that even though there are certain laws and regulations that exist within the state, we are not required to uphold them. I would love to see that space become a green space. I think one of Barrington's strongest aspects is its public space, and I would love to see a big green space where multiple generations can go and enjoy it together. One of the big things I'm campaigning on is this concept of intergenerational living. Barrington's made of families, but it's also made of multi-generational families. My in-laws take my three-year-old daughter to the park, and I got to say, every time my seventy-two-year-old mother-in-law takes her, I get a little nervous. Those play structures are high, and they're not the safest. So yeah, I would love to see another great park with a space that multi-generations can use together.
Thank you. Ms. Hoffman, same question.
I'd love to see a mixed-use facility, since we have an existing structure that's not a structure that's in decay or would need to come down, but there's a lot you could do. Thank Hope Artis Village in Pawtucket. And yes, I said dogs, I'm from Rhode Island originally. But I think of a place like that, and I had thought about what Hampton Meadows could be utilized for. They run a winter farmer's market there, they have a whole bunch of individual, they've got artists, they've got photographers that rent space, and you could use it for coworking. There's just a lot you could do there. I think you could use some green space as well, but I think that, as Jordan had said, the world is sort of our oyster, we could have a lot of options on the table, and I think it's a great, a great problem for us to have.
Ms. Casar.
This is thirty seconds or one minute?
No, this is a minute.
So, you know, it's going to be a few years before we have, we have to answer this question, and this really needs to be something that matches the needs at the time. So before we look at any other uses, we need to figure out, does the school, does the school district need additional space for administration? Do there need to be changes? Is there professional development space? And once the school district decides that it isn't going to use that space, then it comes to the town, and the town can figure out if there's a need for additional administrative space, if there's a need for programmatic space. So until we get through those, those ideas, then we can turn to the general public and say, what do we need at this point in time? This may be five years down the road, this may be eight years down the road. I love all the ideas that have been floated right now, but when it comes time to decide, that's when we turn to the residents of Barrington and say, what do we want to do with this asset?
Thank you. All right, anyone else want to, yes, Mr. O'Neill, thirty seconds.
I certainly agree with Ms. Casar about, when the time comes, we'll definitely have to reevaluate, reevaluate the question, but just one concept that I have been thinking about is that our town relies a lot on property taxes for our, you know, our revenue. So perhaps finding a way to get some revenue out of that building, such as maybe we create a property museum in there that we could rent out for, for sporting events, or perhaps an auditorium for some of the theater that Mr. Hoffman may have mentioned. So things like that, where you can get some creature, that would be a good idea.
Thank you. All right, new question. Actually, Mr. O'Neill, we're coming around, we're starting with you for this one. It'll go O'Neill, Daly, Jankosik. We're skipping you, don't worry, we're coming back. I got it? It's really, it's like the greatest thing I've ever created. All right, next question, Mr. O'Neill. Barrington is facing the largest tax increase in recent history. Over the next five years, taxes could increase dramatically due to the school bond and all-time spending hides. What will you do to try to minimize the impact to taxpayers?
Tough question. And I don't really have a great answer for that, but I have a concept. I, one of the things I would definitely look at is C O A to help advise that, that the budget we have is appropriate, for spending in the appropriate places. I definitely know that, you know, like I said earlier with the taxes, I think we need to find other ways to find increased revenues here in town, and perhaps that's offering more services to businesses in town so that they might feel that they could pay more taxes, say like garbage pickup, so that we can get some revenue from there. Looking for ways to, like I said with the Hampton Meadows, perhaps we can get some revenue there. But the thing is, I think we just need to pay attention to the budget and make sure that we're evening it out and we're not increasing the burden onto our taxes.
Thank you. Mr. Daly.
Thanks. So the first thing that I think about with giant projects like this is scope creep. Every one of these projects that happens in the business world, it goes on longer than it was scheduled for, and it costs more than it was intended to. When it comes to the government, it's ten to a million X as inefficient. So the thing that I would seek to do is to say no to stuff. We want to add this, no. How, if we're going to add X, we have to remove something. We have to be fiscally responsible and do what it takes to not let these scope creeps enter into projects. It'll, it'll have to be paid for by, by someone, and if there's not somebody standing between those expansions, then the people in this room and, you know, everybody else that's here that isn't in this room are going to have to pay for that. So eliminate the scope creep.
Thank you. Ms. Jankosik, same question for a minute.
So I think this is an issue about balance, right? To balance a tax levy, and we have to set the tax rate. That's set yearly at the Hampton Town Meeting. It was lower tax rates set at previous Hampton Town Meeting in preparation for the penny-pinching that we're all going to be feeling in our taxes due to the much-needed school bond. But if you're going to lower taxes, then you have to look at the budget, and you have to think of where you can cut things. Where to be cut? I don't know the answer to that. We're already low on our police force, D P W, we always need more of those, athletic field maintenance, we all know the state that our fields are in. We already offer some tax exemptions for seniors and for veterans, to name a few, but it's going to come down to a balancing act, and understanding a cut here means it gives somewhere else. Again, I don't have a clear-cut direction I'd like to go, but in my own volunteer work, I've had experience balancing budgets with my Alma Matters Athletic Booster Board and within my own work at the library. It's not easy work, and it's going to take patience and commitment, and it's going to take collaboration across the board, both between whoever is elected to the town council and also with the school committee.
Thank you. Anyone else on this? Yeah, Mr. Hughes. Did you? Yeah. Yes.
Whatever order you're going in.
No, go right ahead, Ms. Casar, go right ahead.
All right. So, you know, working on the budget at the state level taught me that, you know, tax increases are, are a single data point. There's a whole lot more that goes into this, so we need to understand what's the reason for that cost increase at the municipal level. And the reality is that we have inflation, there's maintenance of our existing infrastructure, there's modernization of our infrastructure, there's emergencies, we talked about emergency preparedness. Emergency preparedness is an economic strategy to keep taxes a little bit lower, right? If you prepare for the issues, if you plan, then you don't have these big sudden expenditures, and smart spending, really understanding our spending, modernizing how we are, are doing what we do, and planning. We need some strategic planning, we've got some ready, the ready and resilience Barrington, but we need to make a plan, a strategic plan, so that we know where we're headed, what our priorities are, and then we need to face reality, because, you know, costs have not dropped over my lifetime, right? They always go up, so pretending that taxes are going to stay the same is, is really misguided. It hurts, but also, if we really advocate for a living wage so that people can actually afford their lives, then we balance this out, we don't just always say taxes are the problem, it's a whole economic strategy.
Yeah, Mr. Hughes.
I think we also need to try to find a way to come up with some type of commercial tax basis. I mean, Barrington right now has a three percent commercial tax basis, which means if a majority of our expenses, or a majority of our, you know, our tax bill is, falls on the residents. So if we came up with a master plan, maybe of, you know, the downtown, a new downtown, and then kind of execute that plan to help draw new businesses in, you know, I think that's going to be a big thing, if we can kind of bring some commercial tax basis to kind of help out Barrington.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. O'Neill.
I just want to take this opportunity to make a plug for the valid question number one regarding changes to the financial town meeting that's in the charter. This is an opportunity for not just the town council making decisions regarding our, how the money is spent in town, but for all of you to have part of the process, and it's going to be more democratic. So I encourage you to vote yes, and basically what you're voting for is the opportunity to make changes, and all of us can vote on how our, our budget is fixed.
Thank you. All right, new question. None of you know who's going to go next, but I do. All right, it starts with Mr. Hoffman. So we're going to go Hoffman, Casar, Hughes. Is it affordable to live in Barrington? If not, do you support the creation of more affordable housing in town?
That is a good question. We definitely have some challenges, so I'm a Realtor, I work in commercial and residential real estate. We need more affordable housing, there's no doubt about it. It's a matter of how we create it, you know, building court, I'm sure will come up, I've got a lot of thoughts on the topic. Right now, they're talking about building three hundred and forty-four units. When they do that, if they do that, twenty-five percent I think is mandated to be affordable housing. That is an awful lot. Last year, there was only two hundred and twenty-seven houses sold in Barrington, which is way down from normal, usually you're in the high three hundreds. And yeah, we need to find a way to, I'd love to set up a lottery system so we can keep more municipal workers living here, and keeping our people that work in the schools, our fire, our police, giving them a better opportunity to live in the communities they serve would be wonderful, so that's all stuff I'd want to work on.
Thank you. Ms. Casar.
Can you hear a few questions?
Sure. Is it affordable to live in Barrington? If not, do you support the creation of more affordable housing in town?
Thanks. So for a lot of people, it isn't affordable, you know. The reality is that You know, um, the reality is that, uh, the poverty rate in Barrington is 4.6%, which is really pretty low for Rhode Island. But then 11.6% of Barrington residents over 65 live in poverty. That is a significant problem. But to add to that, um, I thought I had a minute. Oh, she doesn't have a minute.
She does have a minute.
Yes.
You now, you now have a minute ten.
Thank you. Okay. Um, but I will feel it well. So, um, but the reality is that at least 24% of renters and owners in every community in Rhode Island are cost burdened. And what cost burden means is they're forced to choose between paying for housing and paying for their other basic needs. That is significant. That means basically a quarter of the people in this town. So yes, my, my answer to that question is it is, Barrington is not affordable for at least a quarter of people. And that doesn't even count when people have a medical emergency, financial crisis or lose a job. So we really need to think about affordability here. So yes, we need affordable housing. We need to figure out how to make it work. We can use our existing housing stock. We can really start to understand how other communities do this. We are a tiny little town. We don't have a lot of open space or, or buildings to refurbish, but we need to figure it out so that our young people and our elders don't have to leave town and leave their communities.
Thank you. Mr. Hughes, a minute on the same question.
I think the biggest thing that Barrington faces is forcing our elders out, right? Our elderly population isn't a lot, isn't, it's not, it's not possible for them to retire here. And so you have that, you know, big goal of where they want to force them into, you know, smaller developments and all that. But I would say most of our elder population want to retire and the homes that they built and the neighborhoods they helped create. And that's probably one of my biggest things that I'm going for. Um, and it's allowing our elderly population to retire in housing, coming up with different tax breaks to do that. Which is why I really go back to my master plan of attacking the commercial tax base. I think if we can find money there, it's going to help everybody live more affordably. I mean, right now Barrington has a 20 cent per thousand tax rate. So, I mean, we're one of the highest in the state. You know, if you look at communities that are equivalent to us, East Greenwich, they have a 13% commercial tax basis. And that just relates to, you know, kind of converts over to millions and millions and millions of dollars at the end of the day, so.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. O'Neill. Thirty seconds on this topic.
Sure. Um, if you can afford to live in your home, then you live in affordable housing. A lot of people in this town are currently overextended, as Ms. Kassar has mentioned. That, um, most people are spending more beyond their means of housing. So we as a town council need to do something to make, um, make that number go down.
Thank you. Mr. Daly, thirty seconds on this one.
Uh, so I have five children, so there is nowhere that's affordable for me. But I would say the, the group that is the, the sort of biggest concern here are seniors. Uh, we, we, I've seen projections of a 37% tax increase and most seniors are on a, a stable income. It, their income's not growing, but, uh, but the taxes are growing substantially. So, uh, I agree with Mr. Hoffman that we have to find some way to give them relief from the ever growing burden when their income is, is stable. And, uh, you know, that'd be among my many, uh, top priorities this morning.
Thank you.
Just going to round this off.
Yes, please. Ms. Jan Kosek, thirty seconds.
Um, I want to echo what's been said about seniors. Um, I have a lot of seniors that live in my neighborhood and, um, you know, echoing both what Mr. Hoffman and Mr. Hughes said, I talk to 50% who would love to stay in their homes. Um, I talk to 50% who would love to downsize. Um, and I think we need to make both of those options available for our seniors. I agree with Mr. Hoffman that we need to do a better job making sure our firefighters and police officers and teachers can stay here in town. But it's also going to be a balancing act. You want to make sure you're not overcrowding the schools. Um, so when those affordable houses start coming up, I would really like to see, first off, those go towards, um, municipal, municipal workers and, um, seniors, um, that already live in town and then want to continue to live in this town, um, and community that they love so much.
Thank you. You, you can take off that last one. She went over by five seconds. A little, a little flustered. All right. New question begins with Mr. Daly. So we're going to go Daly, Jan Kosek and Hoffman for a minute. Are you in favor of requiring town services and town department heads to adopt climate friendly practices?
No. You know, I, I think, I think that, uh, when, when a government the size of ours, when, when a town tries to get too involved in issues like that, they, they ultimately waste a lot of time, effort, energy and, and your money and get a compromised result. Anybody use a paper straw of late, um, it's, it's, it's the result you get. You think about, uh, the ban on offering straws, it, it died a, a silent death. And I think there's things that we should do to, to make it better, but if we mandate those things, we're going to end up with frustrated, uh, people and, and really half solutions that, that really aren't effective at all, uh, only in frustrating people. So if, uh, if we can be ready, if we can spend that time, effort and energy on emergency preparedness, when a giant storm comes, we'll be ready for it. And I think we'll all be happier than, than the straw thing or some other equivalent.
Thank you. Ms. Jan Kosek, a minute on the same question.
Can you repeat the question one more time?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Are you in favor of requiring town services and town department heads to adopt climate friendly practices?
Yes. I'm going to respectfully disagree here, Mr. Daly. Um, but yes, I am. I, I have not been silent that I think climate resiliency is the base issue facing Barrington. I think that we need to be the most focused on. Uh, but when I think about our, our town departments, um, you know, being climate, um, or being friendly, I think about our police fleet. Um, I think about, you know, not just electric cars, but maybe hybrid cars. Um, I think about our school buses. Um, there's a bunch of communities up in Massachusetts that have switched over to, um, totally EV vehicles. Um, I think things like that would be sort of a, a low ask, um, for our town departments. And I don't think we even have to spend your money or our own money in the town. There's grants, um, you know, there's state grants, there's federal grants. There are money out, there's money out there that we can be utilizing that we're not utilizing now, so that we're not asking our taxpayers to spend more money than they already are.
Mr. Hoffman, a minute.
I'm not sure if I see why you would need to mandate something like that when it should just be common sense that we do it and do it efficiently. We have some great boards and commissions. I don't know that they're always given the voice that they are signing up when they're volunteers. Our resilience energy commission does a lot of great work and I think by listening more to them, um, you're not going to be forcing a mandate on, on town employees. So I feel like my answer is kind of in between the two of them. That's, uh, not really, but, um, but that's, that's really where I land. I don't think that needs to be mandated. I just think that we do need to do a better job with it. We've got people, you know, I sit on the economic development commissions I mentioned, and I will speak only for myself, and that commission, we have often felt like the work that we put in as volunteers is not being listened to. And that we are not, we sometimes wonder why we are devoting our time. And I think that we need to do a better job in this town of recognizing the people that do work hard for, uh, making the place better.
Ms. Kassar, you want to jump in? Thirty seconds.
Okay. Thank you. My answer is yes. Um, you know, we have, uh, just, we need to reverse a long history of climate unfriendly and dirty energy impacts. And, uh, you know, it, we only get what we, what we plan for and what I'd like is a future that, that is climate friendly, a future that, uh, where we have done everything we can to protect our town and our natural resources, um, and our assets and infrastructure for the next generation. I think it's irresponsible not to have evidence based policies and yes, absolutely. It'd be great if we required climate friendly practices.
Thank you. Okay. We move to a new question. Uh, just for the, oh, I'm sorry. Do I jump in, Mr. O'Neill?
I'm sorry. I, I have to recall the record. Yes, um, the, the, it should have been yes since the year I was born. Every year, uh, government's been saying no to, to some, doing some of these climate resilient, uh, practices. And unfortunately, the only way to get some of these things done is to have to mandate them and make them happen. So, um, it's already, we're already too late. We need to make sure this, this happens now.
Thank you. All right. Uh, just give a roadmap. We have, uh, three more questions. Sorry. Yes. Three more questions. And so just take a glance at your wild card, see how many you have left, uh, that you want to distribute. So, Ms. Kassar, you're, you're down only two left and everyone else has four. Next question, uh, Ms. Kassar begins with you. And we'll go Kassar, Hughes, O'Neill. There are two major initiatives to create artificial turf, artificial turf field complexes in Barrington. One at Barrington High School, which has combined with renovation of the track. The other at Barrington Middle School to create more durable field options for youth programs. Do you support or object to either of these plans? And do you support the use of artificial turf as a solution to the field problems for youth and school sports teams?
That's a fun one. Thanks. So the reality is that, um, you know, I'm going to go back to evidence based. The evidence shows that having turf fields for our students will cause harm, um, to students and there are environmental, environmental risks to using turf fields. So that's, that's where I stand because we need to make sure that we are making the best choices for the health of our children and the health of our environment and the health of anyone who's using the fields. I understand that we have a, a fields challenge in our town and I think we should innovate and figure it out. But I don't think we should do that at risk of, um, environment and health. But the reality is this is going up to the ballot, um, in November. So it's not up to any one individual, um, or the town council at this point. It's up to the voters. And I think after years and years, decades of conversation, that's the best solution because we haven't been able to come up with a, a way of, um, solving it at this point.
Mr. Hughes, one minute to answer.
Uh, I am in support of fields. Um, you know, I think it, when they, when it was pitched to the residents of Barrington, I think they did the, the town a disservice. The only thing we're asking for with the fields is that the fields are just there to take the pressure off the real grass fields, right? A turf field can see five times more activity than a normal grass field. So we have a field shortage. We've had a field shortage for 40 years. I mean, Scott, you know more about it than anybody. I grew up playing on the fields. When I was here, the, you know, the fields were in much better shape because we had less kids playing on the fields. So it's just, the only thing that field is, is a way to take the pressure off the grass fields. And, you know, no matter what side of the argument you're on, um, you know, most of the, most of the reports have come back inconclusive, whether or not grass fields and turf fields create more injuries, you know, with kids under the age of 18, which is what we're talking about. You know, we're not talking about the NFL Players Association. We're not talking about FIFA. We're not talking about, you know, larger athletes moving at very high speeds. The only thing we're trying to do is take the pressure off the grass fields, allow them to grow. And that's, you know, what the turf field will do, so.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neill, same question for a minute.
Yes. We are very fortunate to live in such a vibrant community. Um, and then we have such a strong, um, youth athletic program here and adult athletic program here. It's great to see everybody out there enjoying the parks and the fields. And so that's a wonderful thing to have. As you can imagine, I am not personally in support of artificial turf. I do not like the idea of putting synthetic grass down. I, but as a town council person, if I was elected, the reason I would be opposed is I feel it would be fiscally irresponsible for us to put down a, a TFS laden plastic turf that would only have to be taken away in a few short years due to the state, the state mandates. It just doesn't make any sense to me. I would rather see that money get spent on proper maintenance of the field, paying for a Department of Public Works employee to maintain those fields exclusively with organic and natural, um, means. And it's just, if we spend that money on the field, we will not have money to spend on all of the other fields that need, um, repairs and maintenance.
Thank you. Anyone else want to jump in on this topic? All right. New question. This goes to Jan Kosek, Hoffman and Kassar.
So do we need some of you twice now?
Uh, we're going to a new question. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure if we need to go twice.
Is this the last?
No, it's, it's, uh, it's not the last.
So if I've already gone first, I can go first again.
Uh, yes. You go first either once or twice. The question is, what would you do as town councillor to impact the business sector in Barrington?
I probably wish you got to go first.
Well, that's the great thing about this question is there's plenty of good ideas to go around. Um, you know, we live in a town that is wonderful and I love living here, but unfortunately the planning that was done 50, 60 years ago is not conducive to a walkable town like we have, um, in Bristol and Warren. Um, something like that would take a lot of money and I would love to see that maybe in a strategic plan. But I love the idea of a restaurant week. Um, East Providence just did one, um, a couple of months ago and they had a really high success rate for it. Um, we have really wonderful restaurants here in town and I'd love to see them uplifted more. Um, I'd like to see more sidewalk sales, um, even though the town is not the most walkable, um, you know, you could do something like, uh, cutting off the parking and the parking lots and, um, you know, doing one of the festivals that we've been doing such a good job doing here in town. Um, and allowing those businesses to be open up and, you know, walkable for maybe, um, around holidays or a few days a year. But yeah, I think there's a lot of things we can do, but I think the main thing to, um, increase, uh, businesses going forward is looking at something in the strategic plan to make the town more walkable.
Thank you. Mr. Hoffman, one minute.
So I have quite a few ideas, as you might imagine. Um, the restaurant week idea, I did float that a couple of years ago and I didn't get a lot of buy-in, but we have some more restaurants now. I think that's worth revisiting for sure. I assume it'll be coming up, but Belt and Court has been my, my biggest thing since I moved a few houses down from it, um, almost six years ago. We've got 39 acres of land in this town that have been laid vacant and falling into ruin for 12 plus years now. The current plan is to put 344 units of housing on there. And quite frankly, I will take something over nothing because nothing is what I've been looking at for six years. It's a decaying, uh, chain link fence and a mansion that could be our light wall, um, just falling into ruin. So I really want to see a change there and I, I'm almost at a point where I don't care what it is. I want some progress. If I'm elected in four years from now, we are looking at the same chain link fence, I will consider it a failure. I would love in a ideal world to see that, um, land partitioned off to different developers. We can cure our sports complex need with the gym that is still an existing structure there. You can set up a commerce center where the mansion is, even if you have to hollow it out. Get some more restaurants in there. Get some senior housing. Get some actual housing and affordable housing. And of that 39 acres, the whole outskirts are wetlands you can't develop on. We can develop some green space, things like the Arnold Arboretum, nice walking paths, things like that. I think we have a world of opportunity there.
Ms. Kassar, one minute.
Thank you. Uh, you know, we have, um, you know, I think somewhere in the neighborhood of 500 businesses in Barrington, something in that neighborhood. Okay. And, you know, a lot of those are home based businesses. A lot of those are individuals running their own businesses out of their homes. Um, I know that, uh, there, there have been two businesses run out of our home. And it, it's hard. It's independent. It's isolating, but those small businesses grow to be the next size business. We go from micro business to two to three employees to five to 20.[1719.02] You know, this is a place where we can grow businesses. We have a lot of ideas, we have a lot of innovative folks, we have a lot of folks with side hustles, right? But we don't necessarily, we're not necessarily cultivating those as well as we could. And so some co-work space, technology supports. The town already through Deborah Page Trim is already doing some fabulous work. If we could just grow that, get some grants, get some coaching, maybe a bit of a small business accelerator. There's a lot of opportunity to grow economically and grow businesses in our town, and I think we should take advantage of that.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neil, 30 seconds.
In Barrington, we have a lot of volunteerism, a lot of people give their time to the various organizations and charities and nonprofits here in town, as well as on the boards and commissions that we have here. And that's the wonderful thing about our town, is so many people want to get involved. And so what I've been running on collaborative governance, and one of the things I mean by that is listening to those boards and those commissions. Mr. Hoffman alluded to this, or mentioned it directly earlier, that there, some of these commissions are not necessarily being listened to. So one of the things I'd like to see happen is if the Economic Development Commission, or any business for that matter, comes to Town Council with an idea, proposal, or better said, local businesses, promote Barrington as a business for the community, we should embrace that idea and examine how we can improve it.
Thank you. Alright, well, next question moves down to Mr. Hughes, Hughes O'Neil Daley. And I don't, Mr. Hoffman, you've been talking about this all night, but yes, there is a question on Belton Court. What would you like to see happen at Belton Court?
Right, my favorite. So I think Brian hit the nail on the head with Belton Court, right? It has so much potential. You know, again, I see Longplex out in Tiberton, you know, and all these sports facilities that they built all over the state. And I think Belton Court would be amazing with, you know, a little food center there, with some senior housing. You have the green space that surrounds it. I mean, I just, I think Brian hit the nail on the head with that. I've always, I've always, you know, ever since the Feli was up there and they were selling candy. You know, you walk up there and you see these big, beautiful buildings, and it's just, now it's in a state of disrepair. You know, I think if it, if we made the right plan, it could truly be great. I think we just need to make sure that we do that. I've seen a lot of things in town where, you know, the plan is okay, but we don't take that extra step. So if we saw an architect with some vision, and then we worked towards that master plan, I think you could have something really incredible up there.
Mr. O'Neil, one minute for the same question.
I would like to remind everybody that Belton Court, as magnificent as it may be, is currently in private hands, and the town, there's very little that we can do. The plan that has been currently put forth through the Planning Board is very similar to what has been described by the gentleman here on the stage. So that's something to keep in mind, this is not like the monastery of Watson, that we can have town input to make very specific things happen. However, by maintaining a healthy relationship with Shine Harmony, if on Town Council, if we can maintain that relationship and push for proper things like proper storm drain, water drainage at that site, or proper sidewalks. We just need to maintain a healthy dialogue with them, when whatever plan they decide to do with that property, we need to push for the proper amenities, and if we can get some of the things that the gentleman had mentioned, that'd be wonderful, but it'll be arable just to push for that.
Mr. Daley, for a minute.
Sure, I think this issue's been well-covered this evening, so when I think about stuff like this, just sort of insight into how I think about things, none of us are as smart as all of us. Somebody smarter than me said that. This is a great opportunity to sort of crowdsource some thoughts from the community. What do our folks think? We could get a committee together of volunteers and ask the community, and put parameters there. We're looking to increase our commercial and residential tax base. We have lots of challenges, as we've been discussing today. So, you know, maybe it's a longplex, maybe it's residential, mixed residential use, there's a food court, whatever. I think there's lots and lots of smart people here that have better ideas than the six of us. So if we figure out what the best one is, that's what I'd want to use.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good, we're good. I have one more bonus question for everyone. This is a, this is a, this is gonna be asked of everyone here, all with one minute to respond. We'll start with Ms. Kassar, and come back this way. Is there anything you would like to talk about that we have not talked about so far tonight?
Okay. You know, I, yes, and yes, there is. And I think, you know, one of the things that comes up a lot is sort of our ongoing conversation as a community about the flagpole, and the issues that have been raised. And I just wanna...
Louder.
Oh, sorry, oh my goodness, sorry. Wasn't using the mic, this is important. Alright, the, what I wanted to just bring up is a conversation about the flagpole, because that has been something that folks have asked me about, there are a lot of opinions. And I feel like it's important to say that the town has consistently, historically acknowledged and honored the veterans of our community and state, and we will absolutely continue to do so. And the country they serve for is a multicultural democracy, and the work of our veterans to protect our freedoms for all citizens is served by ensuring that our communities strive to be places that are free of discrimination. I think there's space for everyone, and there's space for all of the conversation here. And I wanna make sure that we figure out a way to move forward together as whoever is elected as the new Town Council, and from those, from the issues of, that seem to spark people's energy, like the flagpole, to things like housing and affordability. I think we need all, we need everyone in the conversation in order to move us forward.
Thank you. Mr. Hoffman.
We covered Belton Court, right? Yeah, we didn't, you know, we didn't talk about the schools, I know school committees can... But I think making sure that our schools and our safety are maintained is number one. I mean, that's why, that's why I'm here, that's why probably a lot of us are here. Our kids are proudly part of the school system, and it's something we should be proud of. You know, we've, we've got a lot to offer in this town, but I think keeping the schools and the safety of the town as number one in the state is hugely important. I helped a lot of people move here from out of state. We've transplanted like three families from Tennessee, and they all wanted to come to Barrington. So it's a, it's a wonderful place, but I think we've gotta make sure that we're keeping those workers happy, and if we can find more ways to get them to be able to live here in town, that'd be great.
Ms. Jan Kozick, for a minute.
So one thing that I sort of ought to do if I'm elected, and I think is important to talk about here tonight, is collaboration, collaboration with whoever is elected to Town Council, but also collaboration with our school board. Your taxpayer dowers, most of it goes towards what we're doing and the school board is doing here in town. And you have to have those two entities be able to have respectful and hard dialogues, and be able to work together for the good of all Barrington residents. Communication and respectful conversation is the way to get things done, things done, and without it, we can't move forward. Disagreeing is tough, and it can be uncomfortable, but it's also how you solve solutions. It'd be a pretty ineffective and boring place to live if everyone agreed with each other all the time on every single issue and every single idea. Those tough conversations are the ones that propel us forward to be better and bigger things, and I look forward to having those conversations, and I'm going to Town Council with the newly-elected school board.
Thank you. Mr. Daley.
Yeah, I think a thing that I wanted to talk about that I haven't yet is the veterans. And it's probably because I'm a veteran, but I also think, you know, there's certainly room for everyone here, I absolutely believe that, but I remain confused that, why at the expense of the respect of veterans? That's something that is meaningful to me, and again, not just because of my status, but because I think that that's, there's few things that are sacred, and veterans seem to be on that list, certainly are for me. So, you know, there's lots of other things that, there's lots of other solutions aside from the one we came up with. So one of my plans is to repair that relationship with the veterans. There's a second group that's starting up, volunteers be part of that group irrespective of what happens with the Town Council, but a critical issue, and one of those, we created a problem, and now we're fixing the problem. Like, this is kind of one of the things that frustrates a lot of people. Not just veterans, but create a problem, then the solution is more than the actual problem. More of a problem than the problem was, so that's something important to me.
Mr. O'Neil, one minute.
Yes, when all of you leave tonight, I encourage you to drive out by the light to Maple, and look to your left, and look and see the resilience garden that was just planted here in, on our town hall property. It's gorgeous, it's going to look amazing, and one of the things we haven't talked about tonight is something I'd like to do if on Town Council. I wish to incentivize and empower residents to do more to protect our shared natural resources, such as financial reward for homeowners, remove grass and pavement, get rid of the pings and plants, and add green alternative alternatives to their properties that benefit the environment. I would love to see homeowners and renters be able to expense the installation of green infrastructure on their properties, including rain barrels, rain gardens, and native plant gardens, resilience gardens, with a rebate or some other financial incentive. Thank you.
Mr. Hughes, for a minute.
I'm gonna go back to the commercial tax base, so I think if we could find a way to either help monetize the East Bay bike path, right? So we have seven miles of bike path that cut through the backside of the Maple Avenue. We could do restaurants, lemonade stands, ice cream shops, all backward, you know, Maple Avenue car wash used to be, and help monetize that, and also to help change the, some of the zoning laws. So most of Barrington is either neighborhood business or business in general. If we could switch those over to commercial, it may kind of help in, you know, help draw in, you know, the bigger businesses to help fund that commercial tax base.
Thank you. Alright, we're gonna go to closing statements. The, Mr. Hughes, we're gonna start with you, go back down the row. You do all technically have your unused wild card time, so I'll give you a, you do not have to use it, for the sake of the audience, and the school community candidates are waiting. But if you choose to, you could have up to three and a half minutes, Mr. Hughes. You may not, sorry.
In closing, I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the East Bay Media for hosting this special event. I've spent the first 41 years of my life here and have witnessed how great Barrington truly is. I will be campaigning on, I will be campaigning on restoring fiscal responsibility, ensuring our elder residents can retire comfortably, and rebuilding the relationship with the veterans. I'm also committed to supporting our local businesses and municipal workers. While taxes have risen, the benefits we receive have not kept pace. It's time to focus on what matters, most of our community in Barrington, a more affordable place to live. Let's keep national politics at the holiday dinner table, and focus on what we can actually address here on the council. My campaign is centered around the slogan "Back to Basics," and that's what I plan to deliver. Focusing on the core issues that matter most to our town, I believe we can get back to Barrington, get Barrington back on track, and with your support, I think we can make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neil, you have up to two minutes, if you'd like.
Once again, thank you for coming, and thank you to the League of Women Voters, East Bay Media, and the Barrington Public Library for hosting this forum. Thank you to the other candidates, it was an honor to share this candidate forum with you. And I want to thank all the candidates running for local office that are here tonight for stepping up and are serving our community. My name is Kerry O'Neil, and I am asking for your vote. Please check out my website, kerrifercouncil.com. Please reach out to me at o'neilforbarrington@gmail.com. If you're interested in hosting one of my signs, please let me know. But most of all, I'd like to continue this conversation. If something I, you'd like to learn more about, if something that, there's an issue that we didn't cover, reach out to me at the website or early voting. Early voting begins October 16th, and the general election is Tuesday, November 5th. If you're here tonight, or watching this online, or reading this in the Barrington Times, you are already engaged in this election cycle. Many, many of our neighbors are not. Please share what you learned, tell your neighbors about us. Liana Kassar, Jordan Jan Kozick, and I need your votes. I encourage you to vote for Democrats from the top of the ticket for the President of the United States, and to the very bottom for school committee here in Barrington. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Daley, you have up to three minutes.
Excellent, I will talk about my seventh-grade basketball team, and how our press worked really well in the finals. Yeah, I think about this, this potential position and treating it like a duty. Not one that I initially aspired to, but one that I, if elected, will accept and give my all to. My focus is gonna be on the town, on the residents here, and controlling the things that we can control. Not getting wrapped up in narratives, or wasteful spending, or political BS. Just sort of a common sense approach to finding the best solution, and that could come from anywhere, and implementing that solution. Getting things done and eliminating sort of wasteful spending, being a good steward of your and my dollars. Thanks.
Ms. Jan Kozick, up to four minutes. Four less.
So when I was thinking about why I was running for Town Council, and why I love Barrington, I kept thinking of my book club. It's made up of 15 incredible women, they're all parents, children of various ages. Some of them grew up here and stayed, or grew up here and moved back, and some of us have lived here for five years, or five months. We're all active in town, we're coaches, Girl Scout troop leaders, PTO members, or various school and town volunteers. And what I love about this is that regardless of how long we've been here or why, we all care about this town deeply. We talk about it along with the book and the wine we drink at the book club. We share together in all of the wonderful things Barrington has to offer. A supportive community, family, amazing public spaces, and our incredible schools. I am running for Town Council because I am invested in helping this town to be the best place for my family and all of you, my neighbors. It is time for us to initiate actionable change that residents of Barrington can see and feel, and to bring Barrington forward into the future. On climate resiliency, I am committed for fixing the flooding on our streets, sidewalks, and homes, and support solutions on stormwater runoff for our water-abutting communities. For community living, I want to make sure our public spaces are accessible and age-appropriate for all, children and seniors alike. I will advocate for town-inclusive programming, so all ages can learn and grow together, and for affordable housing for our seniors, who either want to stay in their homes and the town and the community they love so much. On safer roads and streets, I will support traffic calming measures, including pedestrian crosswalks, as well as more and ADA-compliant sidewalks. I will engage with our state and federal electeds, because working together on these issues up and down is how we will get these things done. And I'm going to fight to make participation in our local government easier. Democracy is strongest when we all have a chance to contribute our voice. Thank you so much to the East Bay Media Group, and the League of Women Voters, and my fellow running mates that are up here today.
Thank you. Mr. Hoffman, also up to four minutes.
Thank you to everyone who was here tonight. Thank you for hosting this event, the library, the League of Women Voters, and the East Bay Media Group. You know, I'm doing this because I'm a dad, I think it's important to set an example. I think bringing a different perspective, being a financial advisor and a Realtor is gonna be helpful for a position like this, and, you know, I really wish, it's been really fun. Actually, I can't believe I'm saying that, it's been fun tonight. Listening to everybody and getting to know everyone else a little bit better, I genuinely wish we didn't have D or an I next to our names on the ballots, because I think you should be choosing whoever you think's gonna do the best job. I registered as an independent when I turned 18, I've been one ever since, and I think that's important. I also don't necessarily think it's important for what happens on a Town Council, running a town, that you adhere to a party or a political affiliation. So I think my record of community service speaks for itself, I'm a community builder, I'm a collaborator, and I think the things that I invest at are bringing people together. And I think that I will continue to do that if I am elected. I look forward to the challenge. I really wanna develop an arts community here, I really wanna get more business going, and I just think that this is a position that requires leadership and independent thought, and that's something I'll promise.
Thank you. Ms. Kassar, up to two minutes.
Thank you to everyone involved in organizing and hosting the event, and thank you to the folks up here. I really hope that folks don't take lightly what it takes to stand up in front of your community and talk about why you would want their vote. It takes time, it takes energy, whether or not you agree with people. You know, I applaud anyone who runs for office. It's tough on the individual, it's tough on the family, and it changes your relationship with your community, hopefully for the better. So we are, we're in an important election year, I appreciate that Kerry told you, you know, from the top of the ticket to the bottom of the ticket, please vote. of the ticket, please vote, please vote blue. And I differ from Brian in that perspective, because for me, what running as a Democrat has meant is that I believe in the four pillars of the Barrington Democratic Town Committee. And the reason why that's important to me is it's a collection of people in this town who have decided to be civically engaged under a banner of certain values that we decided. There's a lot of, a lot of things going on, like you're getting direction from the top of the party. Well, nobody in Washington literally is calling to tell us what to do. This is our community, this is what we do. And the four pillars of the Barrington Democratic Town Committee's platform are responsive government, support for social justice, economic stewardship, and environmental stewardship. And those are broad ideas, and there are a dozen ways to address each of them, and I think, you know, Jordan and Kerry and I come at each of those in a very different way, and I think by supporting the three of us, you would get a combination of people who can really bring the voices from the community, will be good listeners, and work to find the solutions for the town. You know, tonight, we just scratched the surface on issues, although we had way more questions than I thought we were gonna have. But, you know, I think that we are ready to work with the members of the school committee and the good folks who work at town hall, because also being a municipal worker is sometimes a thankless job. So they are a team that has been working on your behalf, taking the town that we all inherited and trying to make it better. And, ooh, I just got the, I got the hook.
You are running out of time, so completely...
I will be really quick, but as I did as a legislator, I will be an advocate and a leader for you, and I hope that Jordan, Kerry, and I can count on your vote in November. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will, I know some folks on the podium are grumpy with me for changing up the format, but I will say that, I'll reiterate what I said, it's really hard to sit up there and get questions fired at you and answer off the cuff, and it's not an easy thing, and I've probably moderated fifty of these in the last twenty years, and I do appreciate the challenges, so a big round of applause to everyone.